I would like to call the twenty seventh at least, right? The April twenty seventh, bring in a session to order. Before we do the pledge of allegiance, I would like to take note for Laura Hayes. A moment of silence if you would like to add some information.
So for those of you who don't know, Laura Hayes, a school psychologist at Talon Intermediate School, recently lost battle with pancreatic cancer. Laura, you know, I remember when we brought Laura into the district about five years ago. And I interviewed her. She was very clearly one of those kinds of human beings that is always looking for ways to serve the world. You know, her spirit and her soul were evident in, in, you know, her persona when you met with her. And she was the perfect individual to be a school psychologist because, you know, that, that love, that energy, it was always something that you could see, you know, when you were with her. And so, you know, as you might imagine, the school system is devastated to have lost Laura, certainly the family, you know, devastated. And it's, it's been a very hard couple of days. So we, we just, we love her, miss her, and it's a great loss to this world. She was one of the, the angels that walked on the planet. And so we, you know, we miss her greatly. And if we may, just maybe have a moment of silence for her.
Yeah, right after the pledge of allegiance. And with that, we can Any discussion on these? I did review them, so I'm good. It seems like the emails are received were on target. So therefore, we can do a roll call vote. Gail, Jim?
Hi.
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 And then I have to go online. Sophia?
Hi.
Jada?
I'm gonna stay in. I just joined the party, so I'm not entirely sure where we're at.
Dana?
Hi.
Okay, I as well. Therefore, they are approved as is. Okay, we can move into the public participation. Let's read this. The members of the Talon Board of Ed welcome members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time when appropriate to do so. Members of the Board of Administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those attendance and an effort to proceed in timely manner, follow-up discussion may take place at points of information. You will have two minutes to do so. If you could please list your name and address for the record. I will call upon you. Anyone else?
Two full minutes?
Two full minutes. Name and address.
Brendan Merritt. The sixty seven Sugar Hill Road. Do this in two minutes, but let's try.
Make it fair.
I, and I'm sure you're very much aware of this, a student in Hartford was apparently gender dysphoric and went to the school nurse. The school nurse posted this on Facebook page and she was summarily dismissed, excuse me, put on administrative leave. And in, on this post, she said something to the effect of there were twelve students she knew who were in this eleven-year-old age group who were claiming they were gender dysphoric. Two had told their parents, the others had not. The eleven-year-old was apparently taken for puberty blockers without her parents' knowledge. They found out about it. I don't know how, but we're okay with that. My question is, if that were a case in Talon, if an eleven-year-old went to the school nurse or the social worker or someone in the administration and said, you know, I, I really feel I'm a boy, what would be the process at that point for the administration with that child? Would the child have an opportunity to go to a transgender clinic or a pediatric gender dysphoria clinic and have her diagnosis of herself as a boy be affirmed by that clinic? Or?
Yeah, that is it. That's very
I'd like to ask one more. Discuss to any
We have to see if there's anyone else that would like to have, because this isn't a conversation. This is just where people can talk to the public and then we can talk about influence of information. That's how these go.
Great. So that's it? I sit down?
Yep. And if there's anyone else online, since there's no one else in the room, if you would like to raise your hand, at this time you may do so. So calling once, twice. Oh, I just put the actual, we only have nine members and there's probably a couple of us here. So, um, and there is no one else at this time. I will close out the public participation. And we will move on to correspondence next.
Sure correspondence support. We had an email regarding health curriculum and parental notification with regards to subject matters, top health curriculum. An email regarding student enrollment and transparently and easily providing information that were requested. And then finally, an email expressing concern over the late end date for the school year. The offer asks if the Board would try and prevent such late end dates in future years.
That would be it. So now we're into points of information. Now, did you guys discuss this today in curriculum?
That was a different issue.
Okay.
Yeah. If you want to talk a little bit about that.
I mean, I, I think what you've described is a situation that, you know, that, that broadly you know, the interests of the child are obviously paramount to any, anything that happens in the school system, the welfare of the child is the number one priority. And so some of the things that would play in there are the age of the child, the circumstances around what's happening with that child, you know. We've shared it with their parents, they have not, that type of thing. So the school system obviously puts the child's welfare first. And then, of course, the family always works with families to, to make sure that the child's interests are being taken care of. So the kind of thing you've described here has many different possible nuances. So, you know, it's impossible to really answer that question with one answer. It just depends on the circumstances around that situation. But the, the thing that I will say is that, you know, that the welfare of the child is always the number one priority for anyone in the school system. And certainly for families that were mentioned too.
But I think his question too was the fact that the school district was providing medication for the blockers without parental consent.
Oh, I didn't hear that part of it. We don't, we don't provide medication without parental.
Somehow the student was able to obtain it without the parents.
We can't do a back and forth, but if you answer, it's a question is, does the school system provide medication without parental consent?
No. Anyone else have anything?
Oh yeah, I'll just add to that discussion. I'm not aware of this scenario that Mr. Merritt brought up. I think certainly something that I'd like to do more research on, but, you know, I, I think that the way Dr. Will described it, district's not giving medication to students is appropriate, you know. You know, we do look out for students. Social welfare at the end of the day, not a pharmacy or a doctor. I think that is an important distinction that needs to be made. And obviously, including the parents in those decisions is also very important. And also, I'll just note for one of the emails that we did receive regarding the end of the school year, I didn't get a chance to respond, but we did vote to shorten the school year. And the main reasons is students' birth growth project. And that's, we had to start them, so we ended up ending late. We're not going to try to continue to do that year after year.
Yeah, because we have our calendar set for next year.
Yeah.
And that was voted on already as well. So that's something that they can take a look at. Or I didn't know if we responded with that.
Yeah.
Coming back, trying to get everything. Not there, but I thought it was. Go ahead.
Also, to add to the medication piece, not only do we, does the school system not provide medication, but if a child, the only one who can, if a child is on prescription medication, it can only be administered through parental consent through the school nurse. So if a child is found to have prescription medication on them, even something like an inhaler, they are, it is taken away and it is taken to the school nurse and the school nurse contacts the parents. So they are not allowed to take medication in school without parental consent and through the school nurse.
And I will attest to that because I had to go in and give you your meds at one point when he had to take something.
Yes, my son's inhaler was removed when I didn't realize he took it to school. So it does happen. Yep.
Oh, sorry. So if they, if the student, obviously they're all underage, if they go to the school psychologist to discuss something like that, what is our responsibility to share with the parents? Is that just patient, doctor, kind of confident confidentiality within a school district?
Again, it's, it's really nuanced because it's how old they, what is the circumstances around.
They're eleven, I think, is, was the age.
So I, I think it would just be based on the circumstances around it. You know, there, there are some, you know, the child does have some privacy rights, but again, with respect to what's discussed, I think it just is a case-by-case type of situation. A child might walk in and say, yeah, I told my parents, this is how I feel. This is, you know, the parents may be contacting us, saying, change the name or change the gender identification and power school, et cetera, et cetera. On the other hand, if the child comes in and says, I'm being hurt at home, you know, and I'm afraid for my welfare and somebody's abusing me. And this is, you know, something that I'm feeling right now. And if I say that I could abuse, we are mandated reporters. So it, you know, it's, it's based on what the circumstances are. It's kind of hard to, to give a one-size-fits-all response to that.
But it is interesting though, because I did read that same article.
Go ahead. Thank you, Ashley. Uh, thank you, Brendan, for asking the question. Obviously, from the discussion here, we, we haven't talked about it before, but I'm glad to hear that you know, parents are brought into the conversation as needed and that we're not giving medication to students without parental consent. Just what you said, though, I know this is kind of changing gears. If it's a life-saving medication like an inhaler or glucagon, is the nurse going to get there in time? Like that, that would be something that, as a nurse in the back of my mind, if my child has type one diabetes and it's glucagon, you know, there's plenty of ways that
nurses are on top of that. I can tell you something. They check out lunches, they check throughout the day. I can attest to that.
Yeah, but if you drop to the floor right now and I'm waiting for the school nurse.
Oh, they're, they're
Yeah, they just, there's laws and rules and regulations with respect to these things. And so they follow. And our nurse, our nurse coordinator is very good at making sure that, you know, we're doing the things to the T. Cross the Ds, dot the Is, doing them right. Um, I don't think anybody would ever, you know, if somebody brought something and they were in a crisis, I think that would have to be your first priority is the child. But they do need to know what the children are bringing in so that there's no, you know, issues with medications and something conflicting with something else or them not knowing. Or they want to give an EpiPen, but they don't realize the child has taken a hit of some other antihistamine and that causes some kind of problems or hard implications. You know, they need to know what the kids have for meds so that they can do their job of making sure they don't do anything that hurts them. And I think that's the nature of why that all has to be reported, because certain things can't mix with other things. We have to be careful.
Also, I, I'm sorry. I may have missed, I'm thinking of what I said. I may have miscommunicated a piece there. Right. I'm thinking in terms of, so my son was not on record for needing an inhaler and showed up to school with an inhaler.
Oh, okay.
So, and I don't think I phrased it like that. So that's not, that's my fault, not yours. My assumption would be is that if there was a child who had an advanced asthma, they probably are allowed to carry that inhaler on them. I don't know that. But it would obviously be something the nurse had prior consent to and actually had a prescription and a reason that the child needed to carry it on that. So I probably I just wanted the point to be seen that if any medication is found on a student that is not reported in the system, it is taken and a parent is contacted.
Right. And, and that, that would naturally, you know, public school system happen because like little blue pills could be almost anything. So we don't let kids walk around with meds that aren't prescribed to them or that we don't have records of.
Yeah, absolutely. But let's wrap up that conversation so we can continue on with our agenda in the last minute things. Online, do you guys have anything? Looking good? Okay. We will continue on. Um, student representatives, I don't see them on here, not out of the nine people that are here. So at this point, let's move on to our science presentation by Mark Rudy.
We have a real treat tonight. Mark's here to do a presentation for us. Give us the updates and where we are in science in the district. And so this is probably the most fun we would have had in a long time. So I am the, I'm the slide mover so that the system doesn't, you know, chalk down, but just if you say beep, I will move it. Or move, or next slide, or whatever for you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to be down and talk to you guys tonight. There's a lot of stuff that's going on in the last three years in so very many ways. So I'll, I'll give you a sense of the kind of things that we've been working on through the science curriculum, some of the significant changes that have happened. And hopefully you'll see too, as we go, that there's connections being built across subject areas as well. You'll see that, I think, in a couple of different ways. So I thought it would be helpful first, spend three years and, and, but you were not here the last time I presented. So just to give you a little bit of background, I'll try not to labor this too much. But relatively speaking, we're dealing with in science relatively new standards. There was a publication in two thousand and eleven that came out called The Framework for Science Education that sort of put forth a new set of research and philosophy and guidelines for education, speaking to things like what kids' developmental appropriate needs are, making sure that we're presenting a curriculum that's appropriate for all students, that concept of equity within science instruction, so many different higher level concepts. And then there was a group called CHEE that took that and turned that then into standards. That was in two thousand and thirteen. Connecticut adopted it two years later and Talon adopted their curriculum in the spring of twenty eighteen. It's really about, as that quote lists there, science and engineering. So you'll see me talk about that because that's one of the big significations. It is about, again, all students, K-12, all students across the board and what their needs are. And it is about college career and citizenship preparation. So we all very much acknowledge the fact that we're not producing eight hundred scientists, you know, in high school every year. So what do common everyday citizens need to know? And, you know, some of us have had to sacrifice things that we love because when you sit down and think about it, you know what? Not everybody needs to know how to use a microscope. If you're going to need to know it, you're going to learn it when you need it. So there are certain things that have shifted in that way too, just in terms of thinking about what it is that we need to know to be able to survive and be literate in this world. Um, so it's organized in what are known as three dimensions. The first of those dimensions is the disciplinary core ideas. That's what you guys would probably remember as what you learned in science, the stuff. So when you had to memorize all those lovely vocab lists and all those concepts and pass the test and forget about it the next day, that's what you were working on is the disciplinary core ideas. The big shift is that that's not necessarily the end-all be-all of what we're doing in a science classroom. So on the next couple of slides, you'll see. Uh, the science and engineering practices is one of the big things. So there were practices prior to this, under the CAP standards and the CMT standards that Connecticut had prior to this. There were practices. They were science-only first of all, and they were heavily focused on the investigative process. So like an experiment, have a hypothesis, gather data, present a conclusion. That was it. That's not the only way science works, however. There are people in science that produce significant pieces of work that never see the inside of a lab. There are other things that happen within science and this honors that and some of the other necessary skills. And then it pairs in that engineering piece. Because engineers ideally are taking what we have learned through science and trying to apply it to solve problems. And we want our students to start to think in that way. And you'll notice some of the practices have that duality to them in, in terms of what a scientist would be doing versus what an engineer would be doing. So asking questions in science, but defining problems as an engineer, same concept, but a different bent. So those are important. And then this is, uh, the third dimension is called the cross-cutting concepts. Those are those overarching things. No matter what we're talking about, biology, chemistry, earth science, physics, doesn't matter. These concepts will show up in some way, shape or form. We talk to kids about patterns and data across all of those subject areas. We talk about cause and effect, structure and function across all things. So those are a, a new layer of focus. It's something we may have spoken to in prior science instruction, but it wasn't something that was explicitly talked about. And to be honest, of the three dimensions, it's the one that as science teachers, we're still sort of struggling with how to do meaningfully across the board, but it helps it to be a bit more explicit discussion. So those three pieces, again, called the dimensions, come together into, got your, how's that? Into what you guys would call a standard, what have been referred to as performance expectations. Performance because they are oriented around not just the stuff again, but also how do we want you to demonstrate that stuff? So every one of the performance expectations in the next generation science standards is structured this way with each of those three dimensions represented. That's just one example. So not only do they have to talk about food labs and ecosystems, that's the stuff, the disciplinary core idea. They have to think about that in terms of the overall concept of matter moving around a system. We talk about that in lots of different ways across science. And they have to, in this particular case, the suggestion is it's done through constructing and communicating models of that. So a food web is a model. We typically, I'll talk more about this in a sec, but we typically think scientific models, we're thinking like, you know, baking sort of volcanoes and dioramas and things like that. But a model is actually quite a bit more than that. It's a representation of thinking and interactions. That's exactly what a food web is. So they're, they're showing their knowledge by being able to build and communicate, talk about a food web and all those interactions and those exchanges. So it's a much bigger picture and, and expectation of what students should be able to do. So what that then means for us as science teachers and the shifts that we've been working on and the things that have been happening, there's a few of those. The first I wanted to point out was that it is, does put much more of a focus on doing science. That's been difficult the last couple of years. It's been hard to get a lot of the labs going again because as recommendations changed over time, we were out for three months. When we came back, we weren't allowed to get kids too close together. We didn't have the ball in the same room at all the time. So the doing part was tough. We've finally gotten back to being able to do that much more consistently. And so what I've started to do is, you know, it's not as big of a struggle at the six, twelve levels. Teachers are a little bit more comfortable and have been trained more and to be able to support that and run their labs. Elementary level is a little more difficult at times. And so I've been trying to provide opportunities where I go in, I call it being the fun uncle, because I get to do the fun things and get them all stirred up and they go, bye. But we have a lot of fun. And, and I'm a high school teacher. By past experience, I do nothing without elementary. So it's a lot of fun for me though. So, you know, we had kindergartners come in and they talked a little bit about wind and how it affects their lives. And then we built a pinwheel and streamers to be able to think about how you measure wind and compared those to wind socks and, and animometers that are used by, you know, weather forecasters. And some of those are still to come. The forces and collisions will come soon. Plant parts is coming up very soon with grade one. That's one of their bigger labs. But I'm trying to, to go in and do these things in the science rooms that we have, especially the beautiful new room at Birch Grove. I feel insanely lucky that I have that to work with. Um, and so it does a couple of things. One, to make sure that we get that doing science happening. It helps the kids to have those experiences, but also gives me a chance to model for the teachers too. The approach that we want to take, the kinds of questions we want to ask, the way, a lot of times the lessons are, are turned around. You're asking the kids to do a little investigating and now let's talk about it. And then I'll add in the words and the concepts and the, and the stuff as opposed to lecturing for a while and then go to a lab to prove what I just told you was right. That's where you're sort of used to it, perfect things. Uh, another piece, as I mentioned a second ago, is that concept of models. So getting a bit more of a focus around that. Initially, quite frankly, the, the state focus was on models. If you've looked at any other professional development going on in those early years, it was all about this, primarily because it's a new concept. But those are the kinds of things that kids are producing and across grades. So on the top left there is a second grade model that shows the kids thinking in terms of how the beaver isn't changing its environment and the kinds of things that can live there. The bottom two are from the middle school level. They're making connections between the rock cycle, how you go from sedimentary to igneous to metamorphic, and, and they're connecting it now to the plate tectonic events and the places around the globe that that can actually happen. So where am I going to find those things and why? Um, and then the two in the center and on the top right are the high school level type models where kids are making much broader connections. So literally global in that central one where kids are talking about the movement of materials around the planet. So those are the kinds of things that we're trying to do more of to get kids to show their thinking. And it gives us a deeper look. Because it's not just a test question with a fill-in-the-blank or a true and false or whatever else that may be. We get to see the way they're making literal connections between information. And that gives us a better sense of their understanding. And therefore, if need be, how we can help to adjust that understanding if it's not where it needs to be. The other piece is, again, the content becomes the vehicle for the doing of, and the learning of science. So units are not, instead of doing, uh, what I would have done was a cell division unit and a genetics unit. Now it's a unit that focuses on the, the family and sort of the names of the show. But Little People Big World, I think is the name of the show. And looking at that family and looking at the fact that some of them have a counter pleasure, some of them have other forms of dwarfism, some of them are perfectly normal as far as stature goes. And starting to understand why, to do that, you have to learn how cells divide. You have to learn how genes are passed on. You have to learn how they interact. You're doing all the same stuff, but you're doing it with purpose. So you're getting that engagement in, in something that's hopefully real world. Uh, and then being able to learn the science through that. And so those are just some examples of, of the ones that are there. Most of them are embedded in the real world, but others like the fourth little pig's house, that's a second grade phenomenon. They're doing material science. They're learning about properties of materials and what's good for some purposes and not others. They're going to build the fourth pig's house with materials that are available. Uh, and then they're going to test it. So that's something, you know, but they're learning those concepts in order to be able to do that.
Who doesn't want to take science all over again?
A lot of people have to be, have to be all the time.
I'm like, thank God he didn't wheel in that cart with the big desk. Bring me back to the science class.
Not to do that kind of stuff. The other piece that excites me the most, this slide here is there's a lot more conversation, especially now, a little further into the process of shifts. And thinking about making these phenomenon be connected to local phenomena. Uh, and so that's something I'll be talking about and have been talking with state leaders about.
Absolutely.
But we very much talk with district leaders about trying to find those opportunities to connect the unit phenomenon to the town you live in. So we've been able to do that here in a number of different ways. And these are slight shifts from what those original units were that we adopted four years ago. But looking at oak trees in second grade, instead of a tree that's on an island in the middle of the Pacific, quite frankly, great phenomenon for us that are geeks and want to like look into that. But for second graders, they really don't even know what the heck that is, let alone have any interest in it. Third grade, we've been lucky enough to connect a unit there to the building of the Monarch Way Station outside of TIS, right down the street here. It's been awesome and it's gorgeous. Um, and it's super successful. We've had multiple monarchs come right out of there. So it's been great. And but they're learning again about the ecology and what's affected the monarchs and whether numbers have dropped and what the migration's like. We actually do a, an exchange migration with Mexico. So we tied in that piece. So as well, social studies connections there too, all kinds of cool stuff. Grade four, we shifted to look at the shoreline in Old Saybrook. They, they see shoreline erosion. So they see what happened, global satellite pictures over a bunch of years. Pretty cool, actually, with the massive difference in this one particular area at the end of the river. Grade seven, same concept. They, their initial thing was around why India is where it is. And if you know anything about plate tectonics, that might be interesting. Again, geeks like me, that's a pretty cool idea. Seventh graders don't even know where India is for the most part, sadly. And so they really don't care, quite frankly, even if they know where it is, why it got there. But Connecticut has an insane amount of geology in it. People come to Connecticut to study geologic concepts because of the stuff that we find in the state. We've had nearly every major plate tectonic event here at some point in our history. Why not use our geology and start to look at the rocks outside in, in the ground in Talon and use that instead of India? So trying to make those kinds of connections is the next sort of level. And you can see some new opportunities that are already starting to develop with a new garden that's going to go in at Birch Grove. I'm trying to connect with the group in town that takes care of the trails, because I'd love to get them involved in the trail erosion project in fourth grade. Um, and then sixth grade, we've talked a little bit about, they have a project around Lyme disease prevention in parks. Uh, and so can we connect with, you know, Crandall Park or any of the other parks in town and, and maybe? And so can we connect with Crandall Park or any of the other parks in town and maybe do the project with that in reference instead of just hypothetical park. So we'd like to bring it into reality as much as possible. And then, as I mentioned, the engineering piece to me is one of the larger and more important shifts. It is that next level of applying science. They're not just learning the stuff, they're then needing to use it to do something to solve some kind of a problem. And so it is first and foremost across the entire curriculum, the units that we have, and there's about three units per grade elementary level. A little bit more in eighth grade, and then there's about four to five units in the high school courses. Those units have embedded engineering opportunities within their projects. Many times summative projects in the unit where kids are demonstrating their learning through a particular outcome. So as I mentioned, that fourth pig's house in second grade is one of those examples. They have to actually build the house out of the materials provided. They test it with a fan and with a spray bottle to simulate wind and water and rain and see how it does. As we grow this and as we kind of get better at the concept, the, the next level is then can you redesign it? Can you learn from it? Can you try again? Can you build another idea, learn from that and then test it and see how that did? That's the ideal because that's what engineers do. They don't, usually the first idea is not the best one. So let's give that opportunity to redesign and redo. So those are some from K five and the next slide shows you some of the ones that are in the six, 12 or six, 11 curriculum because NGSS standards, you go up that far, they've begun to develop some physics standards. So again, every single grade has at least one, if not two, and in some cases like integrated science, it's embedded in nearly every single year. So there's lots of opportunities for kids to, to experience and think in a way that is engineering like and have opportunities again to build things, test them, evaluate them, report out on, on their, their learning through that. That said, that's also been a push for me on district level. I think this is one of the more pressing needs. Engineering is a high need career area. There's lots of kids that are interested in it in town naturally already anyway. So why not leverage that and begin to build their skill set at the earliest possible times? So over the last few years, these are some of the things that have been happening across the district. We did get the Lego robotics teams off the ground this year. We reinvigorated the TMS team that had to stop because of COVID. And brought back a team to TIS that hasn't been there in quite a few years. There have already been some challenges. The librarian Bethany Hill at TIS has done this because it's her area of interest. So she has opportunities with kids through the library curriculum to do it. So we've been working together to, to grow those kinds of challenges. The adventure convention has been going strong at TMS. It's got great support there. We've had multiple students be recognized at the state level and go out to the national competition. We are waiting on the results of the most recent state competition. So we'll see if we have another one this year.
That was the buzz box, if you guys remember. The buzz box that we had or come.
Yep, yep. The STEM events event is something I brought when I first came. So to me, it's super important to make sure that we're promoting females involvement in STEM fields. I used to have plenty of them in my classroom, but you don't see them make it to the workforce. And so how can we build the support, the interest, the desire and drive to stick with it in a male dominated profession for the most part and provide them with, to me, the most important part is providing them with mentors and with examples of women that do work in the field. And yes, you can do it. And it's not just a bunch of guys, trust me. And so they get to experience things from different companies, local companies, and it's all coordinated through the Connecticut Women's Hall of Fame, which I've been lucky enough to be connected to for quite a while. So it's a really great event. We helped them to develop the virtual version of it because we had to in the pandemic. So that has been cool and it's it's improved quite a bit. And we're hoping that we're back in person next year. Because nothing beats the girls being face to face with those professionals and talking to them about their experiences and then doing these cool activities related to what that company does. We've had Medtronic come with the staple guns they use for sutures in, in operations. We had Ensign Vicford come and do baking soda rockets with, with film canisters, all kinds of fun stuff that they get to do. But again, they get to talk to those women and see that, yes, people like me have gone on and done this. I'm going to stick with it. And the earlier we can do that, the better. I'll speak a little bit more to the next one in just a second. We've had that connection with Rage Robotics and we've got beginning to talk to the, those three buildings in particular about clubs. There's some clubs already at high school level. We can expand that. But there's opportunities to have STEM clubs all the way through and there's interest with the teachers too of having that. So we're looking into getting some more year long experiences besides the Lego robotics ones in November. So how can you keep that kind of interest going? One of the things that's informed us the most, we've been connected through the Perkins Grant with a partnership and an externship program for teachers. This allows the teachers to take some time away and think through how we make some better connections and design some better experiences for students with the input of industry partners. So last year I did this with my co-founder Beth Penny and Michelle Brady at the high school level. We were paired with Kerry Manufacturing down in Cromwell, Connecticut. So I had a chance to visit the facility multiple times, talk to the owners, talk to the employer, employees themselves, talk to HR, talk to management. I get a sense of all those different kinds of skills and things that are needed. What do they need? What are they seeing? What do they see that's strong? What do they wish these people were coming with? And then the employees, it was incredible to talk to them in terms of what they wish they had before they came and how much of that can we do? This year we're, I'm doing it with middle school. So Lynn Hayward, the, is the pure science teacher and Scott Schneider's tech ed teacher. And so we are in the process now. We just got paired with Wellington Nate Plate. So hopefully we'll be visiting them in the next few weeks to do the same thing. Because again, the earlier we can get kids exposed and let them see these kinds of careers, they can get a better sense of what they need. What it does for us again is gives those, those relationships with industry partners and districts across the state. But it gives us a sense again of the mindset, the skills and the content knowledge they need. It helped to inform a couple of purchases we made at the tech ed department at the high schools, make sure we've put some equipment in place to support developing the right skills with kids and the right equipment that they're going to use. And then thinking about our courses, our instruction, our assessment, can we start to tweak those? You know, can we put in pieces where they're doing a little bit of the marketing thinking? It's not just an engineering task. They also have to be able to sell this. It's audio marketing. Those are kinds of things. I think the one that sat most with me was the communication piece. They spoke a lot about the ability for engineers almost to speak in two different languages because you've got to speak in that hyper technical language to be able to talk to other engineers. But if I'm standing in a meeting like this, I got to be able to talk to you in layman's terms, right? And I got to be able to present it in a way that the public. But the public needs that, that next level of, of approach so that you can get the same ideas across it in a way that other people aren't going to understand. That's huge. So can we provide opportunities? Can we ask the kid to write it up both ways? Wouldn't have done that before. So those are the kinds of things that have come out of that work. So this is all culminating that ultimately in the development of pathways at the high school level, one of which will be the engineering pathway. So this is my vision statement for that. Again, getting at that concept of exposing students, somebody actually asked me today, I was talking to Mike today, he said in five words or less, can you tell me what the purpose of the pathways are all about? And I said, well, it's, to me, it's about leveraging interest first. I'll talk, I'll show you where it's, where that fits in for me in a second. But then that exposure and that opportunity to explore. So that's really what the pathway concept is. So we know we have a large number of kids interested in going into engineering. So let's leverage that interest in classrooms across the board. We're not just talking tech ed classes. Let's look at the classes in the course areas that connect as well. Science obviously being one of those. But can we also then provide them exposure again, get them into partners, let them talk to professionals, let them see what a day in life is like, let them explore their career. I want to do that for them now while they're here for free. Before they go start spending thousands of dollars on a training program and maybe, God forbid, discover that's not what they actually want to do. And now they're thousands of dollars out, having to restart, change majors, who knows? Let's give them those experiences. Let's give them those exposures and those opportunities to sort of try it out before they get to that level. So that's sort of what the pathway concept is going to be all about. So what that looks like course wise at the high school. Those courses for, for the most part in place, there's been some changes to the curriculum on small levels based on the information that we got from those conversations with industry partners, but things colossal. The robotics class was one piece though, that we talked about bringing in because of the need for building skills there. And again, in that conversation with Rage Robotics and the kinds of skills and things that they do, and how can we help support that, but also give kids things beyond that. If they're not in Rage, what can we do? And again, on the math and science side first and foremost, getting those curricular connections. So we're beginning, just beginning to kind of talk about what we want to call curriculum overlays. So when you have a biology class, we're not going to rewrite the biology curriculum wholesale for engineering, but are there opportunities in the curriculum as we have it to tweak something a little bit or maybe provide a choice that's more engineering oriented within a particular project? And look for those opportunities to leverage that interest. And hopefully that gets kids to buy more into the class and also be able to perform better. We all know that we can show our understanding better when we're working in an area that's important and interesting to us. So can we leverage that there? Interestingly, I was reached out to by one of the world language teachers. Because some of those upper level world language classes have larger connections and starts to talk about careers and things like that. And so she saw an opportunity to make a connection. So I'm going to say yes every time I can and we're going to figure that out. So anytime I think we can make connections to, to the kids' interests, we do nothing but benefit. And then tying that all together is that design thinking process I sort of alluded to earlier, getting kids to understand the general concept of being able to find a problem, investigate a problem, brainstorm ideas. Come up with a, with a particular approach, make a prototype, test it, retest it, share your ideas, all that stuff. Have that be sort of a uniform approach in all of those connections that we can make in all those courses where it makes sense. The bigger piece or the piece beyond that though, that many other districts don't necessarily go to is the extensions, the, the next level of experiences for kids. So having specialized field trips that speak to those needs. The Yukon Senior Design Day is a really cool thing. It's actually open to the public, but nobody's probably ever heard of it. The seniors work with companies in the School of Engineering and they have to complete projects and present those projects. And so they do so on the floor of Gampa Pavilion. And the public can go in and can talk to them and see the kind of things they're doing. It's amazing what they do. We have the opportunity to bring our students there. And so to me, it's a perfect thing for juniors to do is they're starting to think about schools and starting to think about, is this really what I want to do? Let's bring them there to talk to these guys that have been in a Yukon School of Engineering and gone through a program and they're about to graduate and enter the workforce and how's that been? What's that done for you? Were you excited? Are you scared? Are you like, have those conversations? The kids were amazing in talking to them. So that's going to be one of those sort of cornerstone experiences in the pathway. And we already have some others like the workforce bear, the career day, construction career day. Those things are already happening. We're going to get a speaker series going with, in that partnership with the School of Engineering at Yukon. So there'll be monthly speakers talking to kids about some of the things they offer, again, about their particular areas of focus. Nobody really knows what civil engineering is all about. So let's take some time to tell kids about that because maybe that's an area of interest they have, but they don't even know yet. And then some of those other opportunities. So there's an opportunity to get Connecticut Venture Convention at high school level. They've expanded over the last few years. We want to try to move that up there. Actually had a couple of students this year as freshmen who were so invested in it from TMS that said, you know what? I'm going to do it myself, even if it's not here yet. So they, they entered this year as high school students. Ultimately, what we want to build though, is the job shadow and internship piece. Again, getting those kids in, seeing a day in the life at the very least, if not actually having a full fledged internship so they can experience what it's actually like before they pursue whatever degree or certifications that they So all of that said, the piece that sort of, that lets us figure out where to go next and how to continue to build and strengthen all of those things is the assessment and data piece, which quite frankly, for science has been lacking. Because this is a relatively new shift, the first time the NGSS test for the state was given was three years ago, the year before the pandemic closed us. So it's only been given twice. The very first time ever, not necessarily valid, it's just the first time. So let's see how it did. And then last year, after skipping the year of the pandemic. And last year it was given to remote to some kids, not Tallinn, but across the state, remote to some kids, in person to others. Some kids had been in personal years, some were hybrid all year, some were at home all year. The experiences are across the board. So the data was presented from the state with caveat, 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 caveat of like, this is really not necessarily valid information because of all of these confounding factors. So we don't have a time to work with just yet. To me, this year's test is probably going to be a more true baseline than anything has been so far. Just so you know, what we, what we do get though, in the three grades when it's given, five, eight and eleven. We do get their overall proficiency level. There's no official passing score, but three essentially expresses that you've met enough standards to be considered proficient. They don't really use that particular term, but in terms that you've probably heard before. The other piece they give us though, and the only other piece they give us is relative proficiency for those core ideas. So notice nothing about the practices, nothing about the cross cutting concepts. We have no idea how to really measure those yet and then get that out of a test of this type. But we do get in each of those areas. So as it says under life science LS one, LS two, it'll tell us how the kids did relative strength and relative to the standards. So they'll tell us whether they've met or approaching the standard and then they'll tell us whether that, whether plus minus equals, whether that's a relative strength compared to the whole test or whether it's relatively the same performance as they saw on the whole test. Every once in a while we'll get one. We've all had a couple of minuses where that just means that kids didn't do quite as strongly in that particular area. So then that tells us, okay, that's where we have to take a look at where that comes into the curriculum and how we can start to strengthen that. But that's it. That's, that's the information we get right now out of our state test. And again, haven't really been able to rely on that information yet because of all the confounding factors that go on. So what's beginning to become more important are these interim assessment blocks. You might've heard them through ELA and MATHS because they are available for SPAC as well. They're relatively new for science again, only in the last couple of years. It's been tough to use them up until now because the items that were released for these were the rejected field test items. There's a reason they're rejected. So some of them were very good. Some of them were quite frankly terrible. And so we've been hesitant to really rely on them heavily. The good news is they did release a whole new set of vetted items in January. So not only has the pool of items expanded finally, they're also vetted. So we know they're more reliable, they're more valid items. So we can start to use them. But basically what it does is it gives us a chance to have the kids do more than just a practice test. It's going to be, it's given on the same platform in the same way. So I thought it'd be helpful to walk you through kind of what one looks like and the kind of information we can get out of it. Because to me, this is a bit more pertinent and actionable potentially than what we get out of the, the larger some of the tests. So this one is going to be a grade five example. Will and I will work together because we're going to go back and forth through the next three slides, a few different ways to kind of walk you through this. But that's the performance expectation. They're, they're aligned to one at a time. So each thing, even though there's multiple questions, it's getting at that one concept. In this case, getting kids to understand graphical representations of weather. That's basically the idea. So this one here is just a screenshot of what it looks like. So when the, when the IB comes up, the test item comes up, this is what the kids see. It is a split screen. So there's information they can scroll through on the left hand side. And then the questions are there on the right hand side. And again, often that, that is a scroll as well. This is actually a block. So this has a part A, part B, and there's a part C down below that you'll see in a minute. But that's what the kids see. To us, that's relatively new. As teachers, we didn't, we don't give assessments this way. We haven't seen this. It is very similar and it is basically the same platform as SPAC again. So the kids are actually more comfortable with this than we are. But they do have to have that ability to manipulate both sides of the screen to, to work their way through this, but the rest is familiar to them. The tools that are available, the line highlighters and zooms in and out and all that, that's exactly the same as SPAC. So the kids are actually more comfortable with this than we are. So on the next slide, what I did is I screenshotted that left hand column. So if you scroll all the way down, this is all the information that's available in there. So it's a map of Arizona in four sections. The green colors represent the amount of rainfall in those areas for the year. The further down one would be on the right there, those three graphs of rainfall over the course of the year in three towns in Arizona. So that's the information they're given. On the next slide, you begin to see some of the questions. So the first question asks them to look at that map of Arizona and those regions and rank them most, second and least rainfall. So if you scroll back there quick, just so people can look. It's the central, the southwest and the southeast. So they have to decide which one gets the most, which one gets the least and which ones in the middle. The points on this one, just so you know, they have to get the least correct. The least has to be southwest. Okay, there's actually leeway given for the most and the second most because depending on how you look at that diagram, if you look at it, you can make an argument for either of the other two being the most. So they're allowed to vary on that one, but the southwest has to be the least to get full credit on that. In part B there, they're asked to then look at the second set of graphs and decide when each city gets the most rainfall. So again, looking at those graphs, they're looking for the highest bar essentially and what time of year that is. And they have to be able to check that off the box. There's an interesting thing that happened there though. We'll revisit in just a second, but that's that particular question. And then if you go down a couple of slides, the last question. They give them an unknown. They give them a graph of an unknown city in Arizona. And they have to figure out which of those three on the right hand side, it, it most likely represents. So that means they have to compare that graph to the three that they were given. Look for similarities, figure out where that city was in, in Arizona, the similar one, and then look for other things in that same area that they can check off. So in this particular case, they had to come up with the fact that it's St. Simon, because this graph, if you scroll back up a couple again, if you notice that graph was highest in the middle. And that middle graph for Tucson is highest in the middle. They have to see that similarity of pattern. They have to go over to the map and go, oh, Tucson's in the southeast. So St. Simon, that's probably where that graph is from. So pretty, pretty high level, pretty in-depth thinking by the time they get to the end of that. So one more slide past that. These are the results that we got. It just so happened that this was given at fifth grade and sixth grade. They gave the same item at nearly the same time. So it was pretty cool to get a larger sample size of what happened. And if you look at the results, they're highly similar in terms of what the kids were successful at and what we still need to work on. So to break that down for you, first of all, out of five, three point eight is a pretty good outcome. So the kids did well. outcome. So the kids did well overall. They can, they have that concept of being able to look at a pictorial representation and get some information out of it. That's good. What they struggled with most, item one point five, that's that last question. So making those connections and making those leaps between multiple images and multiple representations and seeing commonalities and patterns is something we need to work on. Fifth and sixth graders, not classically surprising, but important for us to know. And so I was immediately able to share that with the teachers in in terms of what we need to start to work on. We can start to offer more questions like that and give them more tasks like that to get them to build up that capacity. The other thing that happened on item one point two, not as bad, but I think what happened there, if we scroll back up for a second, two slides, that's part B. I have a sneaking suspicion and I had teachers talk to kids about this. The kids probably felt they had to have a check mark for each world, each column. And that's actually not the correct answer. Because two of the towns get the most in the fall, if I remember right, and one gets the most in summer. That was the correct answer. But if kids felt like, no, I gotta have one for spring, one for fall, one for summer, they're gonna, they're gonna lose a point. So, and I saw this even in AP kids, jump, what I call jumping the question here, assuming what the answer must be. No, just answer the question. Use the data against the question. What it says is what it says. That's important. And so those are huge takeaways for us that we can act on immediately. So that's just one example of of how these IDs are starting to become one of our more useful data points. Ideally, going to the next slide. What we'll do with those, and we're in the process now of expanding that to all all grades across three eleven that are available. And we, I would like to have at least two in every grade and every course. Ideally, we'd get to the point where we'd have one in each unit connected to the content of that unit. I will go to my grave saying that I hated the CAP Labs in my biology class where I had to stop for two weeks and talk about skateboard ramps. Why can't we do it vetted and connected to the content of the unit? These items can do that. So that's what I've been doing is going through and looking at the units they have and looking at the items that are available now and going, okay, based on what you have in third grade, here's the best items for you to use and here's the units you can use them in. As we get some comfort with that, with the teachers and and actually giving them in the process of doing that through the computer, it probably will get to the point, hopefully we'll get to the point where those items also then become part of the students' grade, but we're not there yet. We're also getting some, a little bit down into second grade with some high AB like items. And again, we'll get that to have some representation and delivery across all teachers when we start to see these outcomes. Let's talk about that and work on that as a as a district. So with all that said, I think I'll circle back real quick on the next slide. We've made lots of connections and there's so many more connections to make. I'd be remiss to not point out the fact that science can also support SEL learning. We do want to make sure that every kid knows they have potential. We want to help them manage their feelings so that they don't overreact and that they all do truly have love. So with that said, it was a lot and super fast. Questions, thoughts?
I'm excited. This was great. This was fantastic. They all that you went through everything, even including example of the test. I think it was fantastic. I'm super excited.
And the IUVs can be used for progress monitoring a lot better than the old style test.
And we can give more of them and have them happening throughout the year as opposed to one test in three grades that. Right.
You know, you break it up.
Yeah, and they don't take more than fifteen minutes. I took those kids maybe maybe time to go through that particular one. So they're quick dips, but you can get some pretty serious.
This is like the dibble dwarfs and whatever.
It's still limited in terms of the like the practices and the cross cutting concepts, getting information out of those and we can work on those, but it still gives us some important information.
So first, thank you for coming. It was really enlightening and it was very exciting. I love the fact that you're reaching out to employers and really trying to partner well with them and make sure that everything's really relevant for those students that'll be graduating soon. I think is absolutely huge. So good luck with those continued efforts. I think that's really important. You're doing a good job. Continue. Continue that. I think it's great. I would like to know, between K through twelve, are there some units in some grades where you feel that our material is kind of on the weaker side and needs improvement overall or?
Um, I think the ones that were the most concerning to me, we've dealt with. So as I mentioned, that seventh grade unit in with India as the phenomenon needed to change. Like that didn't sit well to begin with. In sixth grade, we had talked about one as well, where the phenomenon was, to me, it was quasi-real world. It was a stretch. I could explain it to you, but basically I don't think any sixth grader would ever act like what was described in that. So we want it to be something that's real and that they can invest in. So I think we've addressed most of those. I think the place where it sometimes falls apart, though, is that one size doesn't fit all. So that's great to have one phenomenon for an entire unit in theory. So there's two things that happen sometimes. One, if it's a longer unit, that gets bored. We've been talking about this family for two months. It's ridiculous. Not that long, but still. The other piece is sometimes all of the stuff that is in that unit doesn't necessarily directly connect to that particular phenomenon. So we do embed some, we have been working on embedding some smaller ones along the way to pick up in those pieces. Because if you try to stretch a connection, it doesn't work. The kids won't see it. It doesn't make sense. You're trying to make sense out of it yourself for them. It's never going to work. So let's step back then and have a smaller phenomenon and tweak the units that way. That's most of the work that we've been doing. I wouldn't say that there's a unit at all that I would describe as weak. Places that we need to strengthen, but as a whole, not.
That's good to hear. And then I guess one other question you say. Talked about this in the past, but I can't remember off the top of my head. So pathways for engineering up and running, yeah?
So we are just about to put it out to get the first list of students for for engineering and for business.
Be excited to see.
Yeah. I'm itching to get my hands on my kids because I want to have an assembly before the end of the year. Welcome. Here's the great things we're planning. Get ready, get excited. So yeah, we're we're just about ready to start generating that that list of interested kids and it's be awesome.
That's great.
Just kind of piggyback off of what Jacob was saying too. First off, this was a great presentation. Thank you. I'm so excited. I love the all the stuff you're doing in the younger grades too with the hands on.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's so much, that's great for them. It's such a break too from just the math and the English, you know, they they do kind of something fun dope. So as far as the pathway, so that was kind of my question too. So if you, if the kids that haven't technically declared, so if you have a sophomore, for example, and I'm going to speak, y'all know I have a sophomore. So my sophomore loved the intro to engineering class. Like shout out to Mr. Barbador. He was awesome. My son. So my son is now interested in taking, you know, further classes. So since he's going to be a junior, then if he's, I don't know if he'll technically be then avail, like able to do the pathway because he he'll be older. Will those field trip opportunities then be available to other kids, say, who are just taking some of the engineering classes? Or would you have to be in the pathway? Because I, like Jacob was saying, I think some of those real life, talking to real life people would be really interesting for a kid who maybe knows a little what engineering is, but like you said, civil engineering, mechanical engineering. Lord knows, I have no idea what any of that is. So.
Yeah, I think I think there's two answers to that question. The first being, there's no drawback to being in the pathway. They're not meant to lock you in. So we're not asking eighth graders to make career decisions for the rest of their lives. I don't know any of us that knew what that we're going to do. And we often change careers. So that's not the point whatsoever. It is again about that exploring and exposure piece. Being in the pathway also shouldn't preclude you from other classes and other experiences, but sometimes the the it works the other way. The other classes get in the way of maybe taking the engineering class. I'm banned. I can't fit engineering my schedule. I don't want you not in the pathway for that, if that's still an area of interest. So that's where the field trips and things like that come in in terms of providing experiences to kids like that, that maybe can't get into classes, but still want that opportunity to explore. Ideally, what will likely happen is it would be offered first to pathway students and then so we'd want to make sure that the kids that are most interested get that first shot at getting in there and then we'll spend it from there. I'd rather bring every single kid we could.
And it does, it's huge. These, this actually design allows for more field trips in more specialized areas. So you know, that'll give the kids who are very passionate about it, opportunities to do things they've never done before. But sometimes adding more kids to a trip reduces the overall cost of the trip. So you know, there'll be opportunities to to kind of do that depending on the circumstances of the trip. And the pathways is really a course of study that if you're able to complete each of those courses, then you're recognized as having completed the courses of the pathway. So a person could start in their sophomore year and attempt to hit all those courses to complete the pathway as well. So there's a number of options.
And I would definitely want him to join anyway as a junior because again, that's to me, that's that target trip to the Senior Design Day, which will be next spring. So.
Okay. Might already be in my son's situation, he might already be on target with the papers because he's, I've been taking two more engineering classes next year. He's already signed up for.
Some of this is leveraging what we already have going on, but then it's again, that additional piece of those experiential opportunities and increasing that, those experiences.
And I do think until sophomore year, they don't really get that chance to take an engineering class, you know? So that's why kids have the same one. Who's like in love with it this quarter. So I think that, you know, somehow we'd have to try to get freshmen into something because it really isn't.
The freshman would, we'd be pushing them to go to those monthly speaker series and listening, you know, and talking about the programs at Yukon, the different, we'll bring companies in to talk to them about what they have, what they do, what they need. Maybe the other pieces too. I want kids, and quite frankly, at some point I love to do it with adults, to see what these facilities look like now. Because we all think about manufacturing, we think about greasy, smoky, dark, you know, shops. And that is not what it's like anymore. Pratt and Whitney is another trip I'd like to set up again is amazing and it's insanely clean. It's nothing like you would envision. So, you know, so I think kids and families need to see that too, to expand their thoughts of of what it is that they can do.
The other is this, this is our new, we're, you know, walking into this, there are ways to do this as a tiered recognition. So a kid who starts early on might hit a certain threshold and another one might get something also notable, but you know, tiered recognition would be if you take this many credits of it, you get like a gold, you know, you've achieved the gold level or something.
Sounds like a computer.
But something like that and that, you know, on your transfer or whatever, you've you've dedicated this amount of time and you're giving this amount of, you know, kind of recognition for that. So it wouldn't preclude anyone, but yeah, it won't preclude them, but will reward them.
Yeah, but my thing is just it doesn't seem like until they get to that sophomore year that it really the flexibility of the schedule, like they can't, they can have those as choices, but typically the freshman will get.
Yeah, it is. That's why it's so important to do all that extra stuff.
Exactly. So I think that it would push that more for that freshman because I would say that I just think that that sophomore year was really like.
Yeah.
As eighth graders because they're going down and getting presentations during the eighth grade. You know, eighth grade transition.
So one more quick question. It actually wasn't in your presentation, so forgive me. I did notice next year, I was actually very pleased to see that there is an honors chemistry class and an AP chemistry class. Have we given any thought to doing the same for biology? I know we have Yukon bio, but have we considered having a true honors bio?
Just had that conversation two weeks ago.
Okay. I'm going to really advocate for that.
I don't know that we're in a position to do it for next year, but yes.
I think that's so important.
I hear what you're thinking.
Yeah, I've had older children, one took it, one didn't, this one didn't. And I feel like they need, some kids really need that honors level.
Yeah.
Because Yukon is just at a whole nother level that as a sophomore is difficult.
Yeah, and the Yukon class, having taught it, is a little bit more of the traditional approach. It's a lot of stuff.
Yes.
Whereas the the state curriculum is more of that, what do I need to be scientifically and media literate? You know, so when I'm watching something on TV, I don't flip out when they tell me chocolate causes cancer. I'm going to listen to that first and evaluate that claim before I decide I'm not eating chocolate, which is not happening, by the way. So, yeah, that's exactly what we talked about. And the kids that are really interested at high level in science, but maybe not quite there yet or not thinking career wise, I'm going to go that way, which we'd want to push them to. But can we provide them the higher level experience?
I'm going to check in with you then next year.
Thank you for this. Don't tell the others. This was my favorite presentation. But it's probably because of science geek too. A few questions. I'm a life science geek. So I know this was primarily focused on engineering because of the pathway. And you kind of alluded to it with an honors biology class. Do you feel that there's enough there to stimulate that interest? So you had mentioned, right? I think you said looking in a microscope. Are the kids still looking in microscopes?
Yes. Yeah. So I, yeah, I said that and I wondered whether that was.
I'm not gonna think.
They're not gone. But if you remember, that used to be that standard lab where everybody looked at the E and it's upside down and, you know, and then you do strings and these things. There's no need to go to that level. If we're going to use microscopes, we're going to use them on a purpose. So when we're talking about cells and cell structures, we're going to use microscopes to look at cells. Absolutely.
So you're looking at a means.
Yeah, or something. Yeah, something, right? So there are opportunities at different times across different grade levels. Absolutely. You know, I think the the next question related to that, though, is we've got two pathways coming. What are those next two or three at most probably that we can support? One of them might have a sneaking suspicion we'll end up in the life science areas.
Okay.
No promises.
I love it. The other thing that you said, you said the NGSS, and I know this is state and we have to do it. Um, you said it was S back similar. And I feel like whenever I hear S back, I.
People want to pull their kids out.
It's terrible.
So.
Like, do you feel like you're teaching to a test and then? You do.
So no, let me, let me. Yes, okay, but I think that's a good thing.
Okay.
So think about, again, that particular item. That's an item that very much mimics the kinds of things kids will see on on the test. I said S back similar more in terms of the platform and the presentation, right? But this is getting kids to think. This is not just regurgitation of information, which is quite frankly, what CAP was primarily. This is getting kids to think. And any discreet content knowledge that they would need to have to answer this, they're going to be given. This is more about them looking at those diagrams, being able to analyze data, being able to come up with conclusions, relate things to one another, right? I want to teach to that. That's what we want kids to be able to do. So I don't, I I'm not concerned about that piece. I just want it to be to the point where we've given it enough times that we know that validity is there and then I can start to look at it for useful information. Right now, I don't feel like we're there yet. But it's definitely made significant moves in the right direction to give us the the kinds of things that we need to measure kids, understand things, and thinking factor.
Very cool. I'm just looking at my list here. Anything new that you want to bring to the curriculum committee? I'd be happy to see. Because this was great. And then my last question was that this is love. Slide, is that dopamine or what was?
Oxytocin.
There we go. But dopamine's love at first sight, oxytocin is love.
Yes.
All right, I'm done. Thank you so much.
Do our online board members have any questions too? Because I just feel like they are snoozing over here. Well, because we can't. And then we'll come back to this. I had to get them involved, you know?
Hey, we're not snoozing. We're paying attention. I promise. This was an awesome presentation and it was obvious that your, the science program is very child focused, which I think is so awesome. You definitely know your audience and you make science sound fun. And I am not a science person and I'm not a science geek at all. And I mean, the the things you were talking about and the ways by which science is taught, it makes me want to take a science class. So I just wanted to say that I was, I'm really impressed and definitely impressed of how well you, you know, you're gearing the the pro, the program to the children. I think it's awesome.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That means a lot.
Thank you, Sophia. Go ahead, Dana.
Can you hear me? Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you. This is the fun stuff when we get to get these presentations and and get to meet with the staff and hear those, hear what's going on in the schools. I want to reiterate with Sophia, she kind of stole my thunder, but you're right, you do know your audience. You're 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 catering the topic to to even our youngest children so they get start excited about science in the beginning. And it's, I mean, my little guy, he's been doing Beaver things and he did some, the Lego thing in the semesters class. And that's all I could talk about was the Beaver dams and and the water through the Legos and and getting him excited about it at a young age. And then I don't know who said it about, you know, going out into the field, like you talked about going to Pratt and Whitney and going to Yukon. Because you don't want them to make that decision once they're in college and make that incorrect decision. So, you know, having those field trips at the high school level and getting them through that is fantastic. It's very eye opening. Science was, I was, I I loved my math. I loved my numbers and the finite stuff. And science was always very daunting because it was, you know, all these variables and such and like Sophia said, it, you got, it made me excited to hear about it. And I hear about it from my kids and it's exciting. So I do, I do appreciate the presentation tonight and your time tonight. And again, I love hearing how excited the students are. And you can hear it in your voice tonight even too, how excited you are and your team is to teach this curriculum to our students. So thank you.
Thank you. I I think I want to take a minute, if I could, just to say, I I'm extremely thankful as well that I'm in a district that supports. Thank you. I, I think I wanna take a minute if I could just to say, um, I, I'm extremely thankful as well that I'm in a district that supports elementary science from K. There's so many districts in the state that don't do science until fifth grade. So I feel insanely lucky to be working in a town that supports elementary science and the teachers at that level that support it. So that's what's allowed us to do because of things that you just heard in second grade classrooms. So.
So just go walk out to the swamp and.
So that one, I didn't put that one up there yet because I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to do it this year because they've best everything up now with the construction project, but yes, I was taking them that way. Cause there is, uh, there's an experience in the last unit, thinking about what lives and what's environments and how the parts they have fit the environment. So we do do it outside. And I brought them down to the pond, but that pond is becoming more and more difficult to access and.
That's just one of those memories that you know, when the kids are going to sports grove, that's like one of the big things, just like the.
That was one of the first things I heard about.
The other thing, a lot of instructional rounds opportunities here. When we get out of COVID, um, there are many things that the science district does that I think would match very nicely with an instructional rounds visit as we used to do prior to things such as.
I think it would be quite exciting.
Would be.
Um, let's go to Jaden and then move on to John.
Thank you, Ashley. Yeah, I, I, I just wanna sort of reiterate what Sophia and Dana just said. I just came from, the reason I was a few minutes late was I just came from coaching Little League. Um, and so everything you were saying about keeping kids engaged, keeping them, keeping the lessons interactive and keeping the focus again on the kids. I may, I am on board, man. Um, and so that, I, I, I thank you for the presentation. I was a science and math kid up until about fifth grade and then I switched over to English and history. And so I think with what you're, it just, just with natural, natural, um, natural sort of interest. Um, and so I think what you're doing is gonna keep interest in science and, and, and even in math in that regard. So, I like the larger picture aspect of sort of the lessons. I like that the larger, at the larger picture of things is sort of just as important as the tiny details and, and the focus you have to put on those tiny details in order to make a larger picture. Come through. Um, and so, uh, I'm grateful for you being here tonight. Uh, great presentation. Um, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Let's go to John.
It's already been said. Um, I, you know, I, I'm gonna echo everyone, but thank you very much for your time. You know, as a new board member, you know, these, I haven't seen my new presentation yet and this is what I was very excited to listen to and get involved in. And you were fantastic. And the thing that really stuck out for me was, is how fun you made it sound. It made me remember how fun science was. You know, you don't, you don't have to be a science geek to have had a great time with experiments and investigations and, you know, even at the dinner table the other night, there was four of us at the dinner table and my son said, hey, how come I have brown eyes? The three of you have hazel eyes. And I remembered, I remembered, you know, doing that. So when you just brought up the, their heredity, um, that was cool, but, um, and like Ashley said, that, that was the one field trip I never volunteered for. It was the marsh trip. Um, and then the science center used to come into a birch grove and do an in-house assembly. Do you do that one anymore?
Um, not the science center yet, but we were looking at that again. We've had lots come in because they have a cool program with, uh, animals that they bring and talk again about parks and adaptations with the elementary kids. We're trying to bring back some of those.
Oh, that's great. Cause being again, what it made me think of is being in the school a lot, you know, I was there for that. I was there for the STEM stuff at, you know, at TIS that they did in the library at Mrs. Hill and the kids take it right back to the classroom and it's all that, and it's all that they're talking about for the rest of the day. And then they come home and they're doing it, you know, and they're talking to their friends about it and now, you know, in my house I have straw things and all kinds of things, but that, you know, science is fun and the kids really need that right now. As you pointed out, you know, they weren't able to get into those groups for so long and science is, that's the place that you do that, you know, and really work with other people and be hands on and have a great time doing it. And I really got that from your presentation. So that was great. I also really loved that you're focusing on things like, like, um, STEM fun. That, that's great. You know, I love that. I love that you brought the social emotional piece into it. So just thank you very much and thank you very much.
And we'll say that monarch butterfly.
Oh, and that is well.
Fantastic.
My son was in Mrs. Arnold's class when she started that project. So that was another one I thought of, again, how fun and how much the kids talked about it and so they come and, you know, didn't really hear anything about butterflies before that. And that was all the kids were talking about.
Yeah, and I think when, when ideas like that come to me, I do my best not to say, no, I wanna find every way to say yes possible. And that now becomes an outdoor learning space. We've built it up so that every plant out there has a QR code that the kids can scan and learn more about the plant.
It's great even driving by and seeing.
Building up on that every.
And seeing the kids out there.
Yeah, yeah. And seeing the teachers in the morning out there watering.
It's my summer job. And I'll soon have more over, over drove to keep that. You know, and there we're gonna make different connections because they've got a lot of things in their curriculum that spiral in terms of, again, like parks and how things survive and what they need to survive and how the parts match and why things can grow in Connecticut, but maybe not somewhere else and vice versa. So we can plant things out there and get kids to think about what's appropriate to plant out there. Why is it appropriate to plant it out there? How do I take care of it? And do it right there instead of just, I'm gonna make a booklet, which is cute, but.
Yeah.
Right. That's great. I'm so excited.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Um, so just going back to Christine said about the honors bio class and how this seems like it's something works. Is that correct?
Yeah, it would be the same curriculum we run at the college prep level now, but with added level.
Do you know about when you'd like to implement that?
I think we would probably be targeting not this coming year, but this year, twenty twenty-three. Yeah, just so we have enough time to really clearly delineate the two courses.
Okay. I'm just thinking about potential curriculum pretty agenda items. Thank you.
Uh, Jaden, is your hand a new hand or the same hand? I believe it's the same hand. Yep, same hand.
That never happens and I'm.
One more thing. I also, you know, like Christina said about S back, but I love that you said that these are like fifteen minute chunks, like given.
For the, for the IV. Yeah, the NGSS test itself is still a relatively in-depth test. Hour and a half to two hours probably is what's given. Twenty, ninety minutes is the minimum you're supposed to give for it. Um, but it is still a self-paced. It's not adaptive like S back is, but there is a large question bank so that what you get for questions is not what you get for questions. It's not what you get for questions. So it does. Uh, do that at least. Um, so we get a wider sample of what kids.
Well, I love the fifteen minute chunks.
Me too. It's a lot easier to sell that than it is to stop for two hours and give it something multiple times a year.
Yeah, and it gives the, the kids, I think, a better chance to succeed.
And, and ideally what happens is right after they're done, we put that up on the screen and we go through it together and we talk about what you were thinking and what, you know. Right then and there, well, especially their heads.
That's great.
I love that.
Cause you never see, they never see what they did.
No, right?
I wish that you gave us all that question to see if we could.
I was tempted. I didn't know if I'd get in trouble if.
The second one, like it could go either way. I'm like, that would stress me out right then.
No, that means there's two ways to be.
I don't know. Maybe it's this one, maybe it's this one. It's too much time on it.
So the more we can expose kids to questions like that too, if we have not asked questions like that before. So can we start to redesign some of the questions we have that we use now in that way to give them a comfort level so they're not doing that?
Yes.
I love this. This is great. Perhaps I'll have you back sooner than the three years so we can get some more updates.
I'll have you take one. High school one.
Thank you. Thank you so much for calling. That was great. Um, and you'll have this presentation available so people can slip through on mine. Perfect.
Yeah, and, and to Mr. Rudy's credit, he's done an amazing job, science and district. That whole piece of it starting in K and going all the way up, that has a lot to do with his leadership. It's all to do with his leadership. He's done just a phenomenal job bringing the district forward eons in science.
And I love it. I think it's great. And I think like a lot of us that have been in the schools like see these little projects going on and we see these things happening and, you know, sometimes you'll volunteer for the marsh walk. Sometimes you won't, you know?
I haven't seen one thing I haven't been fully impressed by. You know, that, that he's done or that's been happening in science. It's just incredible.
Well, that's, I'm so excited. So like I said, you should come back before three years. That would be great. So let's move on to the White House infrastructure grant.
Okay, so. Okay, so, um, the White House infrastructure grant is broader, that this topic was meant to be a little bit broader than, than one of its supporting topics, which was bus transportation and we dealt with an FFC. Um, the thing about this is that to some extent it says clear as mud, but I'll go through a couple of things and explain sort of why. The administration is launching a five hundred million dollar grant program. Well, if you think about, you know, that there's three hundred million Americans roughly, five hundred million dollars for all of the United States. Not, not a massive amount with respect to some of the stuff, um, that they're, you know, going to commit to. So whenever there's a fixed resource amount, there's a lot of places for this to go. You know, places like Tolland don't usually make it to the top of that list. Usually is a priority district status type of thing that, that they usually will get some of those funds first. So the Biden Harris action plan for better, um, building better school infrastructure, you know, may go to what they consider to be the districts in most of the, and the kinds of things they're looking at are investing in more efficient energy savings school buildings. First row, we have a very efficient building, the high school, um, the geothermal systems, TISTMS. There's been a lot of work in Tolland. It is major buildings, very efficient. These, these kinds of programming dollars would help schools to have greater efficiencies. But again, that's a five hundred million dollar grant. So that's something that, you know, I'm not sure how much Tolland will see, but we will be looking to try to get whatever out of it that we can. We do have, do and have under Mr. Staba's leadership, gotten efficiencies out of LED lighting, things like that. We did through the honeywell agreement, get some efficiencies that continue through today. So we have a lot already and so we have to see what we would qualify for if anything. We did do a training webinar today. It was frankly, it was not that helpful with respect to all of it. So we're gonna continue to, to get as much information as we can. It also is designed to improve air quality. So for, um, you know, for buildings, some, there are some schools that have terrible air quality. We have pretty good air quality systems in our district. We have, um, you know, the MERV eight through the MERV, uh, MERV thirteens or fifteens. So for instance, the high school's system, air filtration system in its large areas is among the best. It's a hospital level. So we have really good filtration systems, uh, but we will look to see if there's anything we can get out of that. ARPA funds are being used for that type of thing. So again, whether or not this particular infrastructure is gonna get us anything, uh, we can use some ARPA funds for it, but Tolland may not be getting an opportunity to do that. And so, you know, for most of this stuff, uh, we're not really probably gonna see too much from the, the expand clean and safe school transportation. Might be something, but again, it's probably priority districts first. One of the things was if you were gonna replace it, you know, um, the paradigm for replacement for us, you know, we might get a bus or two at some point or money to towards it. But a electric bus is three times the cost of a standard diesel bus. So you might get like two hundred thousand dollars for a bus, but the diesel bus is a hundred thousand and the electric is three hundred thousand. You know, so it's not, you might make it equal to what you might have spent on a bus, but the chances that we're gonna get a fleet of electric buses out of something like this is extremely low. If not, not existing. So what will probably be happening is they'll incentivize, you know, starting to move your fleet in that direction. And so in FFC, we talked a little bit about that, um, and how that might look over a decade, not, not really, you know, in year or two. But when incentives open up, uh, first student does have some electric buses and does have a program for it. But, um, but again, the details around that are, they're much more expensive. You'd need to replace the, um, you know, our, our, our bus field would have to become an electric field. You'd have to have the chargers. You'd have to run higher level lines out to it. Um, you have to retrofit and change everything. So this probably for Tolland going to be something that gets done incrementally over a span of time. Whereas some larger district, it may be a priority district, might get an allotment of a large amount. We probably wouldn't see that. We'd see something where we could put into place certain vehicles, maybe a certain percentage of our vehicles, maybe some of the older vehicles, you know, a couple at a time could then be replaced by something else. If you could put infrastructure and at the same time get money to do that. Um, but that's what it would look like here is, you know, over a span of years, a couple at a time and, and infrastructure a couple of times. Cause we don't even have the charging units and it's almost out. You do see them in other places. We don't have any of that here yet.
So essentially though, when you write this grant, you're gonna say it's for busing?
Well, I don't think there's gonna be much worth qualifying for with respects to this. I mean, we have our funding and things like that. But you know, if, if it opens up that we can ask for anything, we will. And we're pretty good at that. And Mr. Stab is great at that. Mr. McLaughlin is too. I also look for stuff, but, um, the chances that, that five hundred million that we're getting twenty percent of that or ten percent of that or even one percent of that is pretty low.
Nothing better than nothing, so.
If the opportunity arises, we'll grab it. As long as what we do doesn't add costs for now. It has to cover itself.
Yeah, so what I thought when I saw five three million, spread that around a couple thousand districts around the country, it really doesn't add up to all that much.
Spread that by two thousand bucks.
So. I, one concern though, um, you know, like as you mentioned, added costs, you know, I go back to say something like a turf field. Open up that whole discussion. You know, I get something with grants, but then there's no grant to pay for its replacement or its upkeep or anything like that. So it seems great, but ten years down the road, you're stuck with this asset that's way more expensive than whatever you tried to replace. Uh, or that went replaced and you don't, it doesn't necessarily really benefit you anymore. And I guess that's my concern with the electric buses is that, you know, I don't, they're definitely not cheaper upfront. Um, I don't really know if they're cheaper in the long term either. And so.
How are the gas prices?
But you know, even, even that, it's still.
Really expensive.
You know what I mean? So, I mean.
This is batteries for those things. That tech requires carbon to build a lot of other stuff, right?
Exactly.
And if you have to replace a battery, then I'm sure it's really.
Huge.
Yeah.
Huge.
Yeah, so, um, I guess that would be one thing that I would definitely want, you know, Mr. Staba or something to take into consideration. And I'm sure you are, but I just wanna emphasize that again, cause I don't wanna leave some board, you know, fifteen years from now, picking up the pieces from, you know, what we thought was a good deal right now.
Yeah, when it gets cold, the batteries don't work as well.
Yeah, and it does.
Cold a lot.
Or whatever, you know, like the other things are, but.
So we, we did talk about this, um, in FFC and I think kinda the consensus too is we didn't think Dr. Will and his staff should kinda spend too much time on this. Because really unless like all the money really was falling from trees, you know, we, we've kinda got other things, I think.
There's probably other grants out there.
Yeah, that we might.
More beneficial time.
Yeah, and you know, I think it's, it's great, you know, there's a lot of electric cars. They seem to be the new thing, but I must really too, like, let's wait a few years and see how the buses play out. If other districts across the country.
Districts have a whole.
I don't think anyone has a whole fleet. I think what they've been experimenting with nationwide is a lot of different gas and natural gas, things like that. So how these measure up against some of these other ones, I don't think we're all a hundred percent there are. I don't think any district has electric.
I don't think I've ever seen.
Native, I don't think so.
On the road, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I think this is all pretty new. From, from, on that scale, you know, on the, on the individual ownership scale, you see it in cars, but I don't think we're seeing it at, at school scale with buses.
We'd rather be a trailblazer with maybe some more pathways rather than the electric buses. I just, I don't know, maybe I'm skeptical.
In the winter is one of the biggest sucks in the back.
No, I mean, if there was something that the grant would cover, that wouldn't it be something that we'd be expending more money on? And like you said, having the time wise going into a grant that ultimately would be, you know, I mean, something is definitely better for nothing if we can use it for something that's going to save us in the end, but not cost us money.
And if people are there yet, get this. Yeah.
Anyone else?
Just real quick, I wasn't gonna say. Uh, I think just from looking at the website, if we were to do anything to actually get dollars from Washington, it looks like if we got involved in Connecticut with the carbon free and healthy. Washington, it looks like if we got involved in Connecticut with the carbon free and healthy schools initiative, that's where they're leaning to. So if you look on the website, the White House website about bills, it goes down the carbon free and healthy schools. And then it lists the states that they're working with on that, and then you click on Connecticut.
Carbon free and healthy.
I don't know, you gotta go to the website, it'll take us.
Efficient HVACs, you know. Ongoing, well, and there's Adam, they have five, 12 star schools in Colorado. Sports right, they've got a list of Charleston County, South Carolina.
I was saying, we'd have to have an active campaign to get those dollars.
Yeah, and they're, they're kind of like efficient HVAC and all that, just putting less carbon into the atmosphere. Not burning coal, not burning.
Perfect, does anyone online have any questions? That we will move on. Doesn't seem like anyone has any questions, comments. So what do we have next here?
So the next thing is our goal setting with the correct dates. So June 8th now and July 27th, that have been established as part of that full review and those setting meetings. We also have the option for a special, so we have, have two that are hard, hard scheduled because they are already things that we could hit if you are amenable to it. These are the dates that he has available. And, you know, we technically do have, that is the fourth Wednesday of July. The by January board meeting, so those are two board meeting dates. The question is, do you want to add a third meeting or do you want to go with those two? And see how that goes. So we can do that other, you know, otherwise if you do want to add a special session, the dates that are available for special sessions are. The dates available for special sessions would be May 18th, first, 26th. And the rest of it is just background document stuff that you've seen before. The goals, the mission, division, the portrait, traditional bowls, flexibilities, all of that is what's in the links. Back from our October meeting or December meeting and last year. So the new info is June 8th, June, July 27th, as our two set dates as board meeting dates to work on goals, goal setting, and do you want to add?
What are everyone's thoughts around that? Cause I don't remember if we have any passive people, we stopped with the two of, we've had three.
I can't remember that one. We've only done that once.
No, we had two different goal settings.
No, I mean, we've only had one type of goals though, right? Over the past couple of years.
Yeah.
So.
So I mean, a lot of times.
I was just looking at the timeline for your evaluation. This always drove me nuts in the past of having the goals or the FOIA presentation on the same night. Cause it was like two hours and then two hours, I feel like they each.
Should be separated.
Yeah, so like the timeline for the eval is June 8th or June 22nd. I'd be fine doing a goal setting session on June 8th if we did your evaluation on the 22nd.
That's just, I'm just looking, cause the closest one they, he would have available would be the May.
Right, we, the 27th is not, 22nd is not available this, but I think you were saying June 8th. But, yeah, what you have is he's available June 8th, July 27th, and then any of those other dates. And what you'd be doing in June is I have to go back from the timeline, we talked probably contracts.
In June for you.
So when you do that, June 8th or June 22nd.
And then the July 13th, so I'm just thinking, or like our meeting for the 27th.
So if you're doing a thought exchange method, I'll just say, we'll see what Nick wants to. You're putting all the things down that you are interested in having as goals. Then eventually you're going to narrow those down through some process, which would probably be the second meeting. And then you'd probably be narrowing those down further and tweaking for the third. Executing the entire thing in two meetings is not impossible, but you may want to strap in for a later.
Well, it looks like we have more options prior to this. The June, because we have May 18th as an option, June 1st as an option. And that's, you have June 8th is one of the first ones that you have on there, and then the 15th.
Yeah, these are his availability, so you'd also have to go look at against what you got, you all can do here, I can do a doodle bowl with those dates. The first question is, do you want, do you think you need more than two? If you do, then using the dates he has available, and I can doodle bowl them for you and like you kind of respond, or you can try to spitball it now. It's hard to do that in the moment, because you might not know what, you know, you have going on.
We decide after June 27th whether we need a third one.
Well, the thing is, he doesn't have, I don't know what his availability is for August, because it stops at July 6th.
I'm assuming, did you just not ask him?
Well, I asked him for all, what he had available, and that's what he gave me. So we, I didn't give him a stop point, but that was pretty much what he gave, so I don't know what.
He might have just been thinking sooner rather than later.
Can I make a suggestion? We stick with June 8th and June, July 27th for BOE goal setting and then use the June 22nd meeting, right? Is that why June on this timeline here, June 22nd?
It was June, June 8th or 22nd, right?
Yes, so we use that meeting unless you wanted to.
To me, it's really up to you, because I think at that point, I, that's the contract. Yeah, that's up to you. I don't, I don't mind what you want to do, plus that part.
In June 22nd, we're starting that whole week where we have oh, the 22nd is the fifth day of graduation, but that's during the day.
Yeah, and that's the thing, I didn't bet these for what else you guys might have conflicting with them.
June's a tough, tough month, I feel like, to add a meeting. We've already canceled the July meeting, so it's like, we're not going to add one back since we already canceled it.
I mean, we already waited a year to do goals, do we do July 27th, start there?
I mean, we could, and just do a July, August, we have to find out what his August availabilities are.
I'm trying to look that.
I mean, beginning of June, I just, the other thing is too, like, I feel if we start June 8th and then we're going to go all the way to July, you're probably going to forget, like, we're talking July 27th all the way at the end. But it's kind of nice to have it somewhat close to each other, like whether it was beginning of June, beginning of July, I feel like you're going all the way through June, then you're going all the way through July.
I was thinking the same thing, I would surely forget, I don't know about you guys.
Yeah, so maybe we ask them if, your suggestion of starting July 27th, and then doing the August dates, yeah.
I'm looking back, two years ago, we, we did it September 30th, 2020.
Yeah.
So we were definitely, I don't know when the, if this was the first one or the second one, I don't have the specifics on that.
So why don't we just go with that, let's book him for July 27th and then see what his August, and he happens to be somewhere out crazy. Like, I'm gone until October, then we'll have to reevaluate the situation.
Send him a quick email now, so we're talking.
Because I think it's nicer to have it closer together, especially June being as crazy as it is with the graduations and end of the year, fun stuff.
All right, so just so I'm clear, we, we do not want June 8th. We want July 27th.
Everyone's kind of in agreement with that. It's June 8th.
All right, so.
Jacob's like, let's just start this now, we're gonna done.
So you just, you want July 27th, and then I'm asking him for two more dates beyond that, one in August, one in September.
Yeah, I think that would be.
And do you want them to match up with our second?
And not like August at the end of August, like, let's do beginning of August, let's do closer. I guess the July 27th was at the end, so whatever. I just don't want it to be the beginning of the month, and then you go like a month and a half, and then you, like, what do we even say? Then we have to rehash it in order to go back in. Just the back project.
Meeting August 10th or August 24th.
So we'd be starting July 27th, we'd be looking for, there are August 10th or 24th, and that's September.
Then we must be September 14th or 28th, you wouldn't want to start then.
Well, this is just so late, you know, already, but I mean, like, whatever.
You know what, you say that though, no other towns have really got started, because you jump in, you jump right into the budget.
Yeah, it's a problem with the system.
It is, it's flawed, it's flawed Jacob, and we're not going to push it all in May.
Basically, it should, it should start it in July and have, but you know. Rise the charter, whatever. Five years from now.
So you'll send.
Just to clarify, July 27th we want, and then either August 10th or 24th or September 4th, you know, one of those two. And then one of the two, if he has them, so if he doesn't, I'll report back on it.
And that's fine, because if we feel that we get a meeting and then we're like, we're going to get this done, then it can always cancel. I think we're all in agreement with this. Perfect, so let us know what Nick says to you. Okay. Okay, so what's next? Committee and liaison reports, so I know FFC met last week.
We did, we talked about clean bus, that clean school bus program. We talked about district credit card policies and procedures, Dr. Will gave an update and a whole new way of doing it. And I think everybody agreed that it looked, it was a good controls over that. We talked about the student activity account procedures and athletic accounts and how that works at each school. The principal and I believe it was one secretary have joint signing powers. And then they track what all the money goes into individual buckets. And they approve the expenses out of that. And then we reviewed the schedule F1 for March 31st. And I think, I think we had taught, we had seen a full one in the board meeting before. So everything is kind of status quo, we're just gonna really wait and see where we, where we are in the next month or two. But to see, we have to kind of reuse any spending or if we're just in good shape with special ed especially.
Another question for the student activity funds, is that different than the student when in high school they pay for the fees?
No, it all goes to the same place.
It does.
And then they track it basically with class dues, if you're paying. Like, sir, for example, I know like when you pay for an AP test, you write the check to that. But they keep an account for each individual thing. And then when they disperse funds to pay for some stuff, it comes out of the specific account that they put it in, right?
There are multiple different kinds of SAAs. We're going to do a report out to FFC, you know, prior to September 30th on the SAAs. And detail what they are.
I always wondered about that, so it's interesting.
I just wanted to say Jayden's in the waiting room.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so FFC Communications Monday, did you?
Yeah, sorry, realizing that the students weren't here, it seemed something about Student Council fundraiser, I was very out, I can't find it now. Um, so yeah, we had a communication meeting on Monday, the 25th. We continued our discussion about unfunded state mandates. Dr. Will, it kind of gave us an overview of some items that were, we thought, you know, were of importance through CAPS, which is the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents. So we had a discussion surrounding remote learning and the probability that there will be a unfunded state mandate at some point. And then we also talked about the teacher evaluation process and some of the programming that goes into that, that, you know, we may be, you know, spending money on that, isn't really useful seeing where we're going with flexibilities, et cetera. So we're going to continue having this conversation. Our next meeting, we're going to focus on PRAD and cost, maybe getting those acronyms wrong, which are more facilities based state mandates. And then, once we look at a lot of these, we're going to kind of bring them all together, bring it to discuss it with you guys and then talk about if we want to, what next steps we'd like to take. We'd like to take a few of all of them, a few of them, write a letter, go to a state meeting or, or maybe.
Protest.
A T-shirt. I'm not making the T-shirts, done making things. I know, cricket, but I mean.
I made the sticker.
And then for the PTO update, Tacto is still selling their spirit wear. They have their Birch Grove Book Fair, which is super exciting, coming up from May 13th through the 20th. I know that they really, really need volunteers for this, the signup is posted, so, and it has gone up to room parents, so if you're interested, take a look. Um, and they are planning a spring social with the ice cream and a basket giveaway, so there'll be more info coming up for that. TMS PTO is, has their in-store fundraiser at Jeff's Kittlehorn, that's this Saturday, the 30th, with 30% of profits going towards the TMS PTO. The, they're doing a teacher appreciation, May 2nd with a provided lunch, and they're asking for dessert donations. The TMS night at the yard growths on May 12th is sold out, so they're very thankful for the overwhelming support there. And then eighth grade promotion signs will be available for sale soon. The Booster Club is still selling the banners, doing the senior banners and graduation with the date extended to May 13th, pick up on May 25th, complete the banners due June 20th, you can use your cricket for that. The annual Eagle scramble is scheduled for September 25th. Staff appreciation week, the second through the sixth, they're doing a raffle basket event. And they are asking for baskets in any theme of your choosing by this Friday, April 29th. And they're also now doing a self-defense class offered to the community on Saturday, June 4th, from 9:30 to 12:30 at the high school for $40.
And I think with the student council, what you were saying, I think it was TM, TMS, they had it for the Ukraine.
It was Ukraine, okay, so maybe that, I was looking up the wrong.
And I saw that at some point, and I don't know why, I just remembered.
It is, it's bracelets, right? Bracelets being sold by the student council.
Like I said, I think it was for.
So maybe that's why.
Yep.
Yep, you're right, TMS Student Council received a new shipment of TMS Cares bracelets, that'll be on sale during lunch, Thursday, Friday, and next Monday for $1. Proceeds are being donated to assist the people of Ukraine. And I'm noticing a lot of the middle schoolers have a lot of little bracelets at this point, so it's an easy fundraiser, I think, to get your kid to want to participate in.
Perfect, thank you. Curriculum.
Yes, so we have, we're, yeah. We had a good discussion about two different topics. Number one, teacher evaluation, flexibilities. There is a suggestion from the State Board of Education Commissioner to extend that for another school year, current flexibility, citing the board viewed and approved in October. And then we also had a larger discussion about how the state is probably going to be updating their teacher evaluation standards for the 2020 3, 24 school year. Which is something that, you know, we'll continue to discuss and curriculum and probably bring to the board as well. And then we also had a good, yes, about health curriculum. We had a basic flyover of what the district offers for health. It's been requested a few parents and concerns over the past few months. I like to talk a little bit about that, just given that there is some concern about it and we're in a public forum. I think the general consensus we had was that what we have is pretty good, it's pretty even keeled. And does, doesn't go too far in any direction. And it covers, you know, the safe sexual practices as, as well as other aspects of health. Including, you know, nutrition and exercise. A less controversial, but overall, I think the consensus of the committee is what we have is pretty solid. That our, our district is doing a good job, and we're not looking to make any major changes up in that area.
Perfect. Hey, this time am I forgetting anyone that I had met?
Oh. The meeting was canceled last Monday, so we didn't meet, but we did do our town council presentation, the youth center. The meeting was canceled last Monday, so we didn't meet, but we did do our town council presentation, the youth center recommendation last night, which I think was well received. There was actually a couple of questions about collaborating with the Board of Education on some of those issues, so they might want to speak. To ensure that that task force might want to speak at one of our meetings at some point in the future, so.
Chairperson's report, I just hope everyone had a lovely vacation, because I know I truly needed it. I literally thought off of everything and it was wonderful. So I hope everyone's a little bit more refreshed. The whole end of the year craziness season is happening. Um, okay, let's, there's no board action, go with participation, so for the viewers that we have up here. Have two minutes, if you could please list your name and address for the record and it just has to pertain to the agenda items. And raise your hand. If you have anything to say. Not at this time, I will say that that is situated. And so we just need to vote to go into the executive session, executive session for the purpose of the superintendent evaluation. Inviting Dr. Will in.
Jaydamari, I move to enter executive session for the purpose of superintendent evaluation, inviting Dr. Will into the, into the executive session.
First, Singapore, 7.
Any discussion? We'll just do the roll call votes since half of us are online. Let's hear it, so Jen. Sophia?
Hi. Hi.
Aye.
Aye as well, therefore we will enter into executive session at 8:50. All those in favor can say aye. Once and nay, perfect, so we will be ending at 9:58.